Okay, we are calling to order the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Town of Ashford for its regular meeting on Monday, January 8th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Happy New Year to everyone. And again, it's gonna be a very productive year, I think. Let's, having called to order, let's see the seating of alternates. I believe, as I look through the list here, that I don't see Luther or Richard Williams on. Is that correct?
Just let Richard in.
Okay, thank you. Richard's on. So, at this time, um, and I know Alex said he was gonna be delayed or not be able to make it, so, um. Doug, how about I sit you for Luther?
That's fine, Jeff.
Okay, thank you, Doug. All right, very good. That gives us a full complement, nine members. Steve, thank you for joining, obviously, listen in, your input would be potentially needed for next time around, or anything that we go through on this meeting for next meeting, so thank you. Um. I'm gonna open it up to public comments. Does anyone have any comments for the good of the commission? Besides what is currently on to be discussed in tonight's meeting?
Do we need to approve last month's?
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped right over, thank you, jumped right over that, thank you, Mark. Uh. Last month's meeting from December 11th, 2023, do we have any discussion on that? Anyone have any changes, comments, corrections?
This is Janet, I'll move that we accept the minutes.
Thank you very much. And who seconded, for Valerie's sake?
I did Dick Williams.
Dick Williams, okay. We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor of approving the minutes from December 11th? Please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions?
Jeff, this is Doug, all abstain, I was absent in the December meeting.
Very good, thank you, sir. Okay, motion passes. Now, I can move on to the public commentary. Mark, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, so, open for public comment, please raise your hand electronically, or come on screen and wave at us, whatever it is, if you want to get our attention, and speak to us about anything regarding public planning and zoning. Long, quiet pauses, okay, I have to learn to deal with those. Okay, very good. See, hearing no public comment, we'll move on to the agenda, to bills. Um, the only one that I received just recently was the Recording Secretary fees for Valerie for the months of October, November, and December. Um, I moved those on to the treasurer for approval. Uh. Mark, did you, Mark or Mike, did you receive any other bills?
I did not.
I did not.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so now we're on to the correspondence section. Um, we received reports, again, we, uh, this was a little convoluted last time, we received reports, and summary updates from Charles Vidic. And, um, he is down under new business to review those submissions, so we really have to go through those, the they were available to all of the commission members to review, uh, so that we were up to speed on what was submitted. The only other correspondence that was similar was one we received from Kristen Smith, and that one is brief, I can go through that, we didn't discuss it at the last meeting, but both Mike and I thought it fell into the same group, so I'll just share that with the group briefly, this was received on November 6th of 23. Uh, I am writing in response to the PZC's request for citizens to submit letters to the various town committees regarding what they would like to see happen with zoning in the IID area. I spoke out against changing the current zoning regulations to allow larger, more industrial development in the area during the recent debate, and I still hold this opinion. However, I do recognize the need for business in Ashford and welcome it. Although it would be wonderful to create a wilderness zone in the area, as many people have suggested, the reality is that the land has been purchased by a developer who has the right to develop their land within the guidelines and regulations that were in place when the land was purchased. This means that some sort of non-for-profit of, I'm sorry, some sort of for-profit construction must occur there. With this in mind, what I would like to see is something that would enhance life in Ashford versus something that would create a greater flow of traffic and trucking along Route 89, which, yes, I live on, and add to light pollution. Routes 74 and 44 already sliced through this town, acting as rural highways with large volumes of vehicles and trucks traversing them at excessive speeds. Large-scale industrial and warehousing would turn Route 89 into yet another one of these highways, and would further fracture the peaceful nature of life in Ashford, while also endangering its schools and disturbing the multiple farms along the route. In my mind, what could be built there without causing such a disruption while still allowing the landowner to potentially realize reasonable profit are buildings for such businesses as medical offices, grocery slash retail shopping, or other services that benefit local citizens and highway commuters, such as pet or daycare, child daycare, affordable housing, or restaurants. Thank you for approving the moratorium to take the ti- and to take the time to consider and debate this difficult and divisive issue, Kristen Smith, 745 Westford Road. So again, goes along with some of our discussion as we work toward the IID zone. And with that, we will come to, uh, number six, our public hearing, so I'm opening the public hearing for PZ-23-11, the special permit renewal for Section 300-17D for short-term rental at 21 Lakeside Drive, owner applicant, R&amp;M Holdings LLC. The hearing procedure will be as follows, uh, we'll open up for an opening statement from the applicant. Uh, then the commission members will have the opportunity for questions of the applicant. Uh, we'll then open it up for public comment regarding the application. And then a final statement of the applicant, again, please, um, uh, direct your comments to the commission and also, more importantly, to the chair for recognition along these lines. And, uh, it's not an interaction with the public as it is so much gaining their input, uh, and not a question and answer of the applicant at this point, so. Uh, that being said, I'd like to open it up to, uh, Mr. Campbell, I believe, with M&amp;R Holdings, uh, to, uh, share, uh, his application, and again, this is a renewal for the special permit for short-term rental, Mr. Campbell.
Uh, we've put our application in to renew for our special permit for short-term rental. As you know, our application was completed a year ago when it went in, we went, we were looking for the renewal process. We went through the same process, obviously, that we did for the first application since the PZC has not come up with a formal renewal process on it, and that was through Mike Diamato's guidance. I believe, as you see, our application is complete at this time, and we're just looking to renew, so.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, just wanna renew our permit, that's all, I mean, we've.
All right, that being said, we'll open it up to the commission for any, uh, questions of the applicant. And we'll start with, uh, Richard, go right ahead, Richard.
Yep, I would ask the applicant, how many days over the past year have you rented the property?
Uh, we did not short-term rent the property at all last year, we just actually are renewing the permit to keep it in effect in case we do want to short-term rent it.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Nord.
Do you currently live at this address?
We have spent over 200 days of the year there last year. On site, so.
Um, I have a question. Have you done any, any, um, long-term rentals over 28 days?
No, we have not.
I just noticed that you had, uh, ads out for 30-day rentals.
Uh, we do have ads out for, uh, longer-term rentals, yes, we're looking to actually rent possibly to people who are doing foundation repairs, things like that. So, people who are displaced shortly from their homes. I don't, that does nothing to do with the short-term rental, does it, Janet?
No, I, I was just curious because you said you hadn't rented at all, I, I was just wondering if you'd had, uh, didn't rent short-term because you'd been doing long-term rentals.
No.
But you're correct, we're only addressing 28 days or less with this permit, yes.
Any other questions from the commission members? I ju- I just have a couple here, um, uh. Are you, are, Mr. Campbell, are you registered with any of the active rental apps or companies?
Uh, no, we removed our site from it at this time.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yes, it's been removed since last summer.
Oh, okay. And, uh, I guess my question to Mike, uh, have there been any written or formal complaints, uh, issued specific to this location? And this application?
No.
Okay. All right, uh. If there's nothing else from the commission and the commission members asking of, uh, Mr. Campbell, uh, I open it up to the public for any comments or, uh, questions of the commission regarding this application. Again, electronic hand or bring yourself up and wave at us, we'll get, get our attention. Mr. Judson?
Hi, this is Don Judson, I'm at, uh, 53 Lakeside Drive. I'm also the treasurer of Ashford Lake Property Owners Association. Uh, for anybody who maybe doesn't know, Ashford Lake Property Owners Association is an association of 130 property owners that surround Ashford Lake. Uh, 21 Lakeside Drive is within Ashford Lake Property Owners Association. Uh, our experience with this, uh, short-term rental over the last year is that it's caused the association's legal and insurance expenses to increase significantly while providing no benefit to the community.
I- i- is that your statement?
Uh, yeah.
Can I, um, this, can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Um. Is that the case with all the short-term rentals on the lake? Um, that insurance is going up?
No, um. So although I'm not aware of any other short-term rentals on the lake that are currently operating, uh, we have had some from time to time, uh, and when those occurred, uh, there was no increase in insurance cost or legal cost as a result of those operations.
What's different this time?
Um, so this particular operator, uh, has made numerous complaints to many regulators, uh, including the Connecticut Department of Insurance. And their premise for their complaints has been that, uh, the association is mismanaged, uh, thus putting their guests at risk. Um, so as a result of, uh, those complaints, the association has had to engage an attorney to respond, uh, to these numerous complaints. That's the legal cost, uh, the insurance cost occurred, uh, because as a result of the complaint to the Department of Insurance, our insurance company was informed of the complaint because they had to respond to it, and their underwriter, uh, put in a 22% increase this year, which is normally about a 5% increase uh, as a result of this, um, complaint activity.
Uh, Richard, do you have your hand up? Or is that from before?
Richard, you're muted.
Yep, I was looking for, uh, some, uh, expansion on exactly what the costs were, and, uh, Janet, your, your questions, uh, opened that up, so I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Um. Anything else, Mr. Judson?
Uh. I guess I'll just, I'll augment my statement, uh, slightly to say that, uh, you know, the manner in which this STR is operating uh, is financially burdensome to the community. Um. And, you know, they're, they're basically asking their neighbors to share in the risk of operating their STR, and their neighbors have, you know, little to no say in the matter, uh, they're there, they wanna operate, and, uh, the community, uh, you know, is forced to pay additional expenses as a result of that.
Just by, now, I, I'm just trying to get my head around this, just by establishing the short-term rental as opposed to, because he's had no, they've had no guests there for the year, so.
Correct, so our insurance company has said, uh, there's additional risk of this short-term rental, and it's, and specifically this short-term rental due to the complaint that they have made. Um, and we've had a, uh, increased insurance cost. Uh, beyond that, uh, they've, they've made, uh, complaints to the Town of Ashford, they've made complaints to, uh, DEEP, um, and the association has had to expend monies, uh, to respond to these complaints, and the premise for their complaints has been that the association is mismanaged, thus their short-term rental guests are at risk. That's their premise, uh. So we have to respond to that, and there's costs associated with the response. Significant cost, that's about 10% of our, the, the, this year, we spent about 10% of our annual operating budget, about $8,000, uh, between insurance and legal expenses, all unbudgeted uh, this year. Well, 23.
Uh, Richard, I think you were up first before Jeff, you have a question?
Uh, yes, as a follow-up to that, um. I believe when we were discussing this whole idea of, of rentals of, uh, in and around Ashford Lake and Lake Shafie, uh, there were rentals already going on, uh, at both, uh, lakes. Uh, is that still true?
Who are you asking of?
Uh, well, uh, since, uh, Mr. Mr. Judson has brought it up, uh, uh, I would, I would ask him, but I'd also ask Janet since she lives, uh, at the lake, uh. Seems as we were first discussing this, that, uh, the, there was talk that rentals were not an uncommon thing at both lakes.
Mr. Judson, would you want to respond to that?
Sure, um, so there have been a few other, uh, uh, short-term rentals in operation at the lake from time to time. As far as I'm aware currently, there aren't any operating right now, uh, except for, uh, 21 Lakeside Drive, which apparently is not really operating but wants a permit to, um. As I mentioned before, in the past, when those other short-term rental operations took place, there was no impact to insurance for Alpoa, and there was no, uh, impact to the legal fees for Alpoa.
Um, I'll, I'll just answer since my name came up, um. I don't live, I'm in the Lake Association, I don't live on the lake, I'm not aware of any homes that have guests coming in and out. Um. I've had people tell me that there's short-term rentals on the lake, but I don't know of any.
Okay, one, one second, sir, uh, I think Mr. Camp, uh, not Mr. Campbell, uh, Tom, is it?
Tom Barry.
Tom Barry, I, I see you there, I just had, uh.
Yeah, I apologize that my name doesn't appear there, I'm not quite up to snuff on the technology here.
That's okay, just, just give me one minute, because one of my commissioners had his hand up first, and then we'll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, uh, Jeff.
Yeah, I'm curious, what was the legal response to the complaints?
Uh, so there, uh, there were several responses, um, required, and we had to engage our attorney, uh, to review, uh, all the responses, uh, the Campells engaged, uh, their attorney to, uh, uh, compel Alpoa to produce, uh, documents, and, um, and we have complied with that, uh, but needed our attorney's review to make sure that we did that in a manner that was, uh, appropriate and managed the risk to the association as well.
Okay. Um, this is a bit out of the purview of planning and zoning, it sounds like an internal issue between the lake associations and those people who own such rentals, um, especially with the fact that it was a, a complaint that was generated internally between the, this landholder, um, and not due to the fact that it was a short-term rental. So, uh, just making that statement, uh, go ahead, Mr. Barry.
I was just gonna comment on the, uh, the rental situation at the lake. Um, we've always had rentals, but they're generally long-term rentals, there are currently, uh, I can think of, um, at least two or three long-term rentals, um, and, and the insurance company generally never bothered to inquire about rental properties because long-term tenants, some people who have been there for years, actually, um, were kind of regarded as residents. So it really didn't have an impact on our insurance, but once the, uh, the short-term rentals start to appear and we get the inquiry on our, uh, from, from our insurance agent about how many short-term rentals are at the lake, then it becomes a factor in determining, you know, what our liability is. So, in short, the long, the short-term rentals have a significant impact on our, uh, liability and our ability basically to acquire insurance, because trying to get insurance for a lake association is very challenging to begin with.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions from the public? Mr. Trotta?
Yes, thank you.
Nice, nice effect.
All right, I'm trying to have one of them. Yeah, I don't have, only have online anything. Done. Is it still?
Still, 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 still.
It, it looks like you've got two computers or one phone and one computer.
Yeah, I just, I just put the second one back into the waiting room, so your feedback should go away.
I've got, my apologies there, are we good?
Yep.
You're good.
Okay, thank you, yes, hi, my name is Robert Trotta, I reside, um, at 22 Lakeside Drive. Um, reside meaning that's my home, it's, it's where I live, I guess my first, I have two questions, I believe, more, probably more point of a clarification from the board. I just want to make, my, my first one is, I just want to confirm that you no longer need to be a resident, in other, in other, in other words, live, you know, in a, in a, in a, in a home, uh, to rent it, that's not a, being a resident is no longer required, in fact, nobody, it's okay if nobody resides at a house, that it's now okay to rent in the Town of Ashford?
Uh, currently, our regs do require, uh, a residency statement, however, we've been advised by legal counsel that that's something we need to change, uh, in our regs based on recent legislation, uh, and, uh, casework. So, uh, we will be revising our regs, uh, regarding the residency requirement, but currently there is a residency requirement in there.
There, there is, it's just that it's not defined.
It, it's, it's somewhat defined, but correct, yes, it's not, the, the defining process was basically stopped, again, based on the advice of legal counsel due to the fact that it was out of scope for us when it came to the rigs we were setting.
Right, then I would offer as a point of clarification to the board is that this, no one resides at this residence, and I would ask for a point of clarification of the 200 days in which it was occupied, um, does not, would not qualify as, no one resides there, I live across the street, nobody resides at that 21 Lakeside Drive. So I just want to make sure that just point of clarification on that one, my second point.
Excuse you, Mr. Try, but the other thing is that if, according to Mr. Campbell, they've been there for 200 days out of the year, that simply would have met our residency requirements.
So I would then offer, ask for further clarification from the board, is that by this, if I, if I show up at a location and I spend an hour there, does that mean that I reside there?
We're, we, trust me, we are not gonna get into the definition of reside, we just really needed to get into the definition of primary residence and how long that was, and even that needs to be dealt with, but getting into sleeping there, spending an hour there, uh, having a cup of coffee there was nothing we were gonna get into as a definition.
Sure, well, I, I, maybe an oversimplistic view is that I'm a resident, I reside, I live there, and nobody resides or lives at 21 Lakeside Drive, from my person, just by, uh, offer that as consideration to the board. My second, uh, clarification I'm asking for is that in the ordinance, it's offered about for an accommodation for transient guests, is, uh, how the ordinance is written? So I just wanted to confirm that an accommodation, um, that we're not necessarily limiting accommodation, is not limited to a renter. It just means an accommodation is a room or a group of rooms that someone may, may, someone may stay in, that it does not require, uh, in a, a rental agreement or exchange. That the, that, that definition is not limited to renters. Is my, my point of clarification I'm asking.
Do you have, are you talking about a section, or are you talking about a definition?
Sure, I'm talking in the short-term rental, unhosted, the definition, the reads starts with a residential dwelling unit, and it continues on past the second, uh, was, that is offered as an accommodation for transient guests no more than three times during any six-month period. My point of clarification, I was trying to understand, is that it's, it is, it is stated as an accommodation, and that does not limit or limited, that is, to renters.
Okay.
Given that, that understanding, we'll just offer that, that the, the comment, the, the board. Given that, that understanding, we'll just offer that, that the, the comment, the, the board may want to further pursue the comment that there's been no accommodations in the past year. Because if it's, as long as it's set, other room or rent, a room or group of rooms for someone who may reside in, that that is, that I would ask that they might want to clarify that with R and M holdings.
Are you, are you stating that your feeling is that there have been transient guests there?
There have been, and I'm sorry, we appreciate that overnight is not being a definite you're putting here, but there have been accommodate, there have been people staying in that house overnight. Transient guests in excess of the times in which the R and M holdings has actually stayed. Which isn't hard to do because, well, I'll leave it there, excuse me. I think my count is, is about eight different times. And if, and if so, is, so I, I guess I just look at those two clarifications. Number one, residents, but I appreciate it's something the board's still working through. But I would question, you know, what we're, what the board is allowing to qualify as a residence or, 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 or visit, you know, of two hundred times a day, that I think that should be further explored. And if the second one is that on the accommodate, accommodations, overnight accommodations have been granted at this location. And I was, and I say by the definition, it doesn't mean a rental. I'm saying simply accommodations where room or group of rooms have been, have been resided in by other, by people other than R and M holdings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trot. And then the statements from the public, Mr. Barry again. You're muted.
Yeah, if I could just comment on something from what was just being discussed here. The, the, the commission apparently has a rule that you can only rent the property on a certain number of occasions within a certain period of time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, and, and I understand that there's no actual enforcement there, an enforcement mechanism or any way to monitor that. Is that correct?
We don't go in and knock on doors or anything like that. What we go by is if there's been any type of formal complaint placed with the zoning office.
Right, so you basically wait for someone like Mr. Trotto or myself, or someone from the board or the community to make a complaint to the commission. Would that be accurate?
Yes.
Okay, well, that puts us in a very difficult and awkward position in terms of our relations with our property owners. Some of the legal things that Don Judson was alluding to earlier started out with our making an inquiry about a guest that's the property. And it was construed to be a complaint. It involved, it wasn't a complaint, actually, it was just an inquiry. Someone had brought a boat to the lake and that's not permitted according to our own actual association guidelines for short-term, short-term rentals. So we made an inquiry, but the inquiry was perceived to be a complaint. And it escalated involving the, the Campbell's attorney and requiring us to get our attorney and a simple inquiry about a, a person who was occupying the property, whether it was a renter or not, turned into a very difficult situation to resolve. And it was really something that should have been quite simple. So we don't want to be basically in that kind of a position where we have to be monitoring people. And we basically have no way of knowing if people who are occupying the premises there are renters or something else. Because in the course of this controversy that we had, the person who was the host at the time exchanged an email with me and, and informed me that various people had permission to use the property. So that there's really no way for us to ascertain whether a person at this property is a renter, a guest, or somebody else. Without having to ask, and as I just said, we don't want to be in that situation of having to ask. And we don't want to be sort of the, you know, the, the monitors of, of the property. And it's been asserted that there were no rentals at all, so we have to assume that everybody that's been observed there since last spring or whenever these regulations came into effect are not renters. Or maybe they are, we don't know. So I, I would kind of request that the commission investigate some kind of mechanism whereby they hold permit holders accountable to sort of confirm how many rentals they've had. And, you know, maybe make that information public so people are aware that everyone is adhering to the, to the requirements of the zoning regulation. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll go back to Mr. Campbell as the applicant with a final statement regarding his application.
Well, we feel we've delivered a complete application and we'd like, and seeing there were no complaints until tonight, we would expect that we would see it, you know, approved again tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I will seek to close the public hearing at this point. Can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Richard, anyone second?
I'll second that, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. And all in favor of closing the hearing?
Hi.
Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all. Also, at this time, I see that Luther has joined us, so Luther, I'd like to have you seated with the commission. Doug, thank you very much.
Yeah, Jeff, just for clarity, I joined about six minutes late, so I was here for the entirety of that public hearing.
Okay, good, well, good, that's, that's good when it comes to the minutes and application. Thank you.
My apologies for the lateness.
Not a problem, I just, lots of names up here, I just didn't see yours hop up, I would have put you in sooner. Okay, so we have the full board, full complement of the board, and we have closed the public hearing. So moving on to unfinished business. Status of training of commission members and requirements going into two thousand twenty-four. I know I've gotten some emails from folks that have finished the requirement to bring them up to speed. I know our newly elected members have for most of two thousand twenty-four, the, the timeframe to come up to speed when it comes to the proper amount of training for planning and zoning commission members as required by the state. Mike, I'd like to just ask you to remind us what those requirements are. As the current requirements from the state for training.
Yep, so the law was changed under Public Act twenty-three dash one seventy-three. So as of October first of two thousand twenty-three, the training requirement was modified so that now rather than having to complete four hours of training basically every other year, you commissioners need to, as of January first, two thousand twenty-four, complete the training once every four years or once per term if the term is longer than four years.
Once every four years. And if the term is less than four years, such as for our alternates? Is there any clarification on that, or is it just we need to get them in?
I, I'd have to check to see how that would apply because the language that they modified was that it be once every four years, or we'll say would be once per term.
Oh, once per term, okay.
So I think that if they were. Yeah, I, I, I'd have to look at that because it, you know, this language doesn't speak to that.
Nope, that's fine, once per term really tends to cover it, so. So again, those of you who are, Richard, I'm sorry, you have a question?
Yes, Alex was tracking all of this before he resigned from the secretary position. Mark, did he pass on to you what he had been doing?
I have, I have names of those who have been trained. I don't have the exact dates for when they were.
You went to, you went to mute Mark.
Sorry about that. So I have, for those who have completed their training, I have Alex, Jeff Silver Smith, Jeff Schullinger, Janet, Richard, Luther, myself, and Gerald. That's who I have for training, who have completed their training. So that leaves four members and alternates that are still deficient.
And I just started a new term, so I guess I have to do it again.
Yeah, the clock basically resets for everyone.
Okay.
It, is that, so it's not that we're good for four years, it's that because we started a new term, the four years doesn't count?
Anybody that was appointed when the existing law was passed had to get their training squared away by the end of twenty-three. They amended the law for effective in October, so that beginning January first, it, the extended timeframe kicks in, so the training requirements prior to January first are sort of, the box is checked and we've moved into a new cycle, if you will. So now everybody needs to get it once every four years or once per term. Starting January first, two thousand twenty-four.
So is it?
So Janet and Luther are okay.
Right, that, if they.
The training last year during the summer, so during the summer last year, I, I was compliant with the training, so. Sorry.
Yep, so you met the obligation and, and now you're required to do another four by the end of your term or the end of the next four years.
Oh, okay.
You have four to six years to get it done.
Mike, I have a question.
Sure.
Dustin? Where, where can I find links to get online training?
So there's a calendar that's maintained by a state organization that basically shows all of the upcoming trainings. And kind of whether it's online or in person. And there's also some pre-recorded trainings that you can watch, three-segment series put on by Howler and Sage. So I'm not sure what's been posted as of yet because we just clicked over to a new year, but we can, we can send that link around again, so you can keep tabs on that posting.
So you're going to send us a link?
Yeah, yeah, we can send that around.
Okay.
Great, thank, thank you, Mike.
So Mike, this is Mark Noble. Is, is the training that Yukon Clear had posted last year, is it still available?
When I checked about two weeks ago, it was still on there and you can watch that, yep.
So, so if you Google Yukon Clear, it'll bring you right to the site as well?
Yep.
But we'll make sure to send all the members the link also, just so they have it and are available to access it. So so this would include especially our, not so much newly elected, but new members such as Tom and Steve. As, you know, as soon as you can, again, the more we are trained and documented as trained, it closes down any loopholes, should there be anything challenged regarding our decisions on any of our commission motions and holdings and such. So the sooner you get that done, the better, greatly appreciated. Nord also, thank you for reaching out, we'll make sure we get you the link, so you can go through this training and get us all into compliance. Any questions other than what we had?
Yeah, just as an aside, there was an email that Alex had sent out, they had all the links, and that's what I used to find the training, and it was very easy to do. And it only took, you know, four to six hours, something like that.
Right, and you could do it at your own speed also with, as opposed to trying to keep up with a group moving along, which is nice. Thank you, Richard. Any other statements or questions regarding the training? Okay, moving on. Final review of letter to town committees regarding revision of P O C D. I put in the changes from the committee from last time with the dating of May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. One of the problems I ran into though was some of the language from what we talked about, such as version control and making them aware of how to make changes. I know Mark had volunteered to put out a statement of how to track and make changes. I am still trying to find an electronic version. I thought I had an electronic version. It turned out not to be even a thumb drive, but it was a disc, and it was from the two thousand five P O C D, not the two thousand fifteen. So I've sent an email out to John Filczak, asking him with NCOG for an e-copy of any type that they might have, floppy disk, whatever, so that we can get that transposed and I can get out the sections that I need to get out to the individual department. So our letter will likely be delayed. I probably won't be sending, I obviously won't be sending it out with January ninth. It'll very likely go out more towards, I'd say that, well, depending on when John gets back to me, I asked him to do this as quickly as possible because we do have a communication we want to get out. Richard, you have a question or a statement?
Yes, it only took me a year to get a electronic version from John Filczak. I, I have something on my computer, whether it is, it's pretty large file size. May have to be put on like a thumb drive and dropped off. But I will find it and, and, and get it into the land use office.
Oh, okay, that'd be great, that'd be fantastic, thank you.
You, you'll do better. I, I've had a few, a few challenges that have taken me out of the loop lately. But I, I will try to find that and, and, and get it in, in, into, you know, the group.
If, if and when you do find it, if it's better, if it's easier for you, I'd be happy to pick it up from you also.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know. Can't do anything tomorrow, but probably the next day. Try to find it.
That would be great, thank you very much. Yes, Janet?
Since time's a waste. Since time's a wasting and groups are having meetings this month. If you can't get the files soon, I I would, I would suggest sending out the letter. And telling them that we'll follow up with the um word document.
That's kind of how the letter is based right now. Um, it doesn't promise an electronic uh uh version of it. And worst cases, I could, you know, provide them a hard copy of their section as opposed to sending them to go find the whole P O C D or something like that. Uh, in a mailing or something, or at least scanning those in and giving them a scan of their current uh section. I'll send it out on an individual basis that way. And then uh we can go from there. Uh, worst case is, as I said, I mean, if they send it to us in Braille, if they send it to us on a. A piece of bark or something like that, as long as we get the information and we'll transpose it some way somehow into a document. But that's a good point. Thank you. Keep that, so time is a wasting, yes, so we need to keep moving forward. So again, we'll get that out and. Uh, hope to hear from John or from Dick maybe this week and we'll go from there. And I'll send an email out letting the commission know what the expectation is in case they get. Caught in a corner at a cocktail party and can address what needs to take place. All right, moving on to new business. So, uh, opening up with discussion regarding uh P Z dash twenty three dash eleven special permit renewal. Uh, per section three hundred dash seventeen D for short term rentals at twenty one Lakeside Drive. From the applicant uh R and M Holdings L L Street. Discussion from the group? Richard, please.
The discussion that we had from the. Folks from Ashford Lake was enlightening. I don't believe we had that kind of feedback when we had first drafted the. Regulation. And. We have no one on from Lake Chaffey tonight, but I think there was also. A much more extensive survey done of the folks at Lake Chaffey concerned in this subject. What was done, and I believe Janet, you and Mark kind of took the lead on doing this. It it seems that it's uh being perceived as a not complete regulation. Am I incorrect on saying that?
Can I just, I think the issue here is, well, part of it is. And and we we did discuss this, is how how do we regulate it? We're we're not, we're not a regulating body. We don't have someone in town to go knock, as Jeff said, to go knocking on doors or or follow up on this. And we had. Uh, said that it would be up to neighbors or. People nearby to complain when the permits came up if. If it looked like they were not following the rules. But that, that is, as Tom Barry pointed out, you know, neighbors might not want to complain. Or might not. Have their little notebooks, so they're writing down every time somebody shows up. So I think that is, I think that is a weakness in the regulations, but I don't know how to, I I don't have. A fix for it right now. I don't know what to say about that.
Yeah, my my point of bringing that up is that a lot of the comments that were made tonight. Were. More on. Modification to the regulation rather than. Talking about whether R and M was in compliance with the regulation as it currently stands. And and that's two very different items. It sounds like we still have work to do on. Changing the regulation, especially in light of the attorney's opinion. But I think right now what we have in front of us is a. Request to extend the permit as per the regulation as it stood. When the initial. Application was approved. So I I don't think we can go back and try to, you know, approve it or disapprove it based upon. What might be in the future or not in the fu- in the future. And I would o- open that up for the comments for the the rest of 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 the commission.
Thank you, Richard. It was a good point regarding the uh the two issues that were discussed. Uh, one, the regs and the other, the actual application itself, which is what the hearing was about. Mark.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't see it as the place of the commission to to necessarily be the enforcer of this regulation. And we did have the discussion when we initially wrote the regulation. You know, there is, there is a lake association and, you know, I don't know exactly how they're set up, but. But I'm, you know, a member of several HOAs and our HOAs certainly have the power. To completely stop short term rentals. In fact, one HOA that I belong to in South Carolina. You know, even though the zone that it's that it's in, as far as the town's concerned, allows short term rentals. The HOA itself does not allow short term rentals. So again, I don't know what. I don't know how this association is set up, but but generally speaking, you know, I can speak to HOAs that they certainly have the power. That if, if the majority want to eliminate short term rentals, they can eliminate short term rentals. But again, I don't know how this association set up, so I can't speak to that. But I think it would be better addressed by the association than the P and Z.
And again, even then, um, our regulations that, again, you and Janet worked on so diligently were. For being applied to not just a lake association or a lake area, it was for the town itself in general.
Yes.
Other discussion, comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to also say, I think you have to remember that we are, we are allowing. Homeowners to operate a business in what is a residential zone. So. We're giving them that. Opportunity. And in response, we've set some rules and regulations to hopefully protect the neighbors. And and allow it to be truly a neighborhood and that the the homeowner's responsibility is to recognize that, I think. That they they are given something that they wouldn't normally have because they're in a residential zone. And when people buy a house in a resident. Residential sound, they don't expect there'll be a business next. So I just want to point that out.
Thank you. Anything else regarding the application? Richard?
Okay. So kind of along the lines that I was stating before asking for the comments. I think the commissions should. Be evaluating R and M Holdings uh application for extension. Based upon the regulation as it currently exists. Not as how it might be changed or could be changed by a homeowners association.
But, yeah, I I I agree wholeheartedly. I mean, we have to go by the regs we have, not by the regs that we might change. Or that um might be changed in the future. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Um, is there a motion? I'll step out. Based on the current regulations we have, the facts that are, the fact that there is no. Uh, formal complaints against the applicant, the fact the applicant hasn't really had any rentals. So to speak, in this business that Janet has identified. I make the motion to approve the application for R and M Holdings uh for their application for continuing their short term rental. Uh, I've got a, that was close. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with Mark on that one, Luther. It was just a couple of words ahead.
I had tried to make that a motion and fortunately I was muted, but I I I concur, Jeff.
Okay, okay, so I've made a motion, Mark has seconded. All those in favor of approving the short term rental, say aye. All those opposed? Nord, thank you. Abstentions? Still moved. The application has been approved.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Okay, moving on to the review of the submissions from uh Charles Viddick. And again, I hope everyone has taken the time to review the material. Mr. Viddick, I'm not expecting you to go through all necessarily uh the twelve or fifteen pages or so. But. Has there? How you'd like to start with an opening statement of any type or what you'd like to go through?
Uh, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I did submit two reports. Uh, I think the two most relevant aspects of what I submitted. The first document was one that I shared with the Conservation Commission dealing with the P O C D issues. But specifically. Page three and four, I listed about a dozen different best practices that exist. Uh, around Connecticut. Uh, that may be instructed for the commission in reviewing any revisions it may make to the. Interstate interchange development zone. Uh, and I should say. I live at forty Frontage Road in Ashford, but I've been a professional planner for over forty five years. Working in probably a third of the towns in Connecticut and involved with all of them in some fashion or another. In my professional planning uh career. I do manage a database of one hundred sixty nine towns, of which two are without zoning. Uh, and over probably five hundred different data elements as to what the towns are doing. I've been doing it consistently since nineteen seventy eight. So I have a fairly good handle on what are best practices out there. And the whole idea of page three and four of that document, or just to give some ideas, if you're looking for ideas of things that may be pertinent. In terms of different zoning. Uh, strategies, uh, that's the purpose behind it. And and I'd say specifically. Uh, the buildable lot concept in particular, I think is a valuable tool. It's not used as a comprehensive tool across Connecticut town wide. Uh, only forty five towns in Connecticut actually use it as a town wide concept. It applies regardless of whether it's commercial, industrial or residential zone. But with the last twenty five, thirty years of increasing focus on environmental issues. Flood plane issues, stormwater management issues, climate change issues, low impact development issues, those are all examples of what's been emerging. Buildable lot standards. I think it become much more useful uh as not just a surgical tool for. Uh, residential zones, but for all zones. So I I think the. Best practices that are out there are definitely worth looking at in in that the purpose, basically, I put in here. Of these various best practices are to give ideas of what towns that have done that I think may be useful. Either whether it's building heights. The low impact development standards, which are really now coming into the norm in Connecticut. Uh, as a result of the municipal separate storm sewer system regulations, otherwise known as MS four. Um, Ashford doesn't quite yet have those uh applying to the town at this point. Although it's just a matter of time. And so looking at what some of these best practices are, you know, for example Winchester and Morris. Uh, East Granby are examples of towns that have fairly sophisticated uh low impact development regulations. Uh, and yet they're relatively rural municipalities. In fact, some were rural in Ashford. So the whole idea here was to try to find not the best practice. Uh, for a town that might be super sophisticated, but the best practice that would be most. Applicable to a more rural municipality like the town we live in. So that was basically the idea behind that. And the second document is one that. Is a recent development by Yukon Clear Program. Uh, they came up with a new tool. Which basically allows all the municipalities in the state that have watershed land to actually evaluate that land. Uh, for development purposes, but also more importantly, what they did it was. Did it prioritize what land should be kept and what shouldn't be? It isn't that this tool should be used to necessarily say no to development. And the interstate interchange development zone, but what it does do is it's a very nifty. Software system that integrates the various uh land use parameters that exist in any given parcel in Ashford. Uh, to determine what the impacts would be. Uh, if buildable lot standards, as this particular software has identified it, were applied. So I went through that analysis to see what would happen and if you've read the report, you'll see that. And of course, you would see this if you've actually walked that property like I have. I mean, it's my neighboring property practically. If you go underneath the interstate, not quite, but. Quite nearby. And so it's a very sophisticated tool, um, and it does have value, especially when the town is short on cash. To do site assessments. Um, the tool integrates these things. To a very useful tool and it was just released literally in, I think, late October of this year. Um, and I had an opportunity to use it and that's what this particular report reflects. Uh, which shows that there's a significant amount of uh unbuildable land based on the parameters that the. The regula- uh, the proposed software that Yukon Clear has put together. Uh, it's not that the town or the development can occur there, but it identifies what the issues are that are most prevalent and of. Uh, most concerned for those concerned about uh wetlands, for example, steep slopes and. Shallow to bedrock issues like that. So anyway, the whole idea behind this is just another piece of information for the commission to consider. Uh, especially if we're looking at trying to uh design with some sense of. Awareness of the. Land use restrictions that exist on a property. So I I think that's probably enough of an introduction. For those who may have any questions about. Uh, either one of those documents.
Hey, thank you for that uh opening statement and I do. Open it up to the commission. I know I've got a couple of comments uh to make, but I want to hear what others potentially. Came away with from the uh documents, again, the uh critique as well as the. Assessment document. So I open it up to the commission members of any questions you have of the documents or of Mr. Viddick. Janet?
Hi, thank you, thank you, Mr. Viddick. Um, this is really. Interesting, sort of overwhelming amount of information. So. Can the, can we ask Yukon Clear about this to? Get further information or use the. get further information or use the, um, the tool with, with their insight as well?
Uh, yes.
Not that I have anything, not that I'm denigrating what you're saying, but I, I, I think it would be beneficial to have it from a, a neutral source.
Yeah, well, uh, while everyone, uh, may think there's a neutral source, there's no such thing as neutrality in this world. Uh, even the scientists have been born with their biases. So we have to get over that thing first. Everyone has a bias. The question is whether they're on the table or not. So, uh, all I did in using this particular software was use what's already there. What I would suggest you do is I have Mike Demato do exactly what I did and go in and use the software and see what kind of report it runs because it's a standard report. Uh, there's nothing I did except push the button. Essentially, the key to it is you pick a site and then you evaluate it. Uh, the question really is whether or not you like the parameters that Yukon Clear has proposed. Uh, they have from the training I took on it. They allow for you to change the parameters if you want from the ones that they have preset. For example, if you don't want a fifteen percent slope as your standard, uh, and you want to do ten percent, well, you could go in and do that. Or perhaps they could do that for you. But basically the way it is right now, it's a canned report. Um, and so if you go in and request what are the parameters for any given property, um, in Ashford by lot, it does it by lot. Um, it will then run a report for you, but the, uh, authors of the report, uh, which are really Yukon Clear staff, um, have indicated that if you wanted to alter some of those parameters, if, for example, if you had a different definition of buildable lot, um, they could work with you and perhaps change the parameters, uh, however you'd want to do that as opposed to the ones that they put in at this point in time. But it is very simple and Mike Demato, I'm sure could do this, uh, and run, if he used the same, uh, software I did, he would run up with the same basic parameters I came up with here unless, uh, Yukon Clear people altered those basic assumptions.
And do, do we have ac- access to what the parameters are or?
Uh, yes, the, the parameters actually would be in the back of the report that I submitted. Uh, on page five of that report, table one shows all of the printout of the items that come out of that report. I didn't generate, uh, the actual report, uh, parameters. All I did is print them out and make it pretty. So you could read them instead of in, uh, some very fine type that the software system was going to push out on us. So basically I just made it so it looks a little more elegant in terms of font size. Um, and I added a, a total acres with constraints as a third column. Other than that, you could do it yourself, uh, because the day, the data in column one and two is basically straight out of their software system. So it, it is a very useful tool. And in fact, the only problem I have with the tool right now is whether there's flexibility, as I mentioned earlier, in changing the parameters if you wanted to. And second, that it doesn't apply to municipalities that don't have public water supply watersheds. But that's not our problem in, in Ashford because ninety nine percent of our town is within a public water supply watershed other than right atop of Mount Snow, uh, which there's a little bit of a fraction of of that parcel up there, uh, that goes in a different watershed. So yeah, I mean, it's very simple. I, I was very impressed with the ease with which it can be used. Um, and it's probably one of the most sophisticated tools I've seen. Um, and unfortunately it's just not something that all hundred sixty nine towns can use. It's only going to be useful for about a hundred and thirteen towns that have public water supply watershed lands.
Yeah, Jeff, I've had that hand raised for a while.
No, no, go right, go right ahead, Richard. Go right ahead.
Mr. Vidic, are you proposing with, with your report that the town revise its entire land use regulations? Townwide?
What, what I'm suggesting in this report is that this particular tool can be useful in identifying, um, what the land constraints would be in any given location. Uh, I do believe as a matter of, uh, planning practice that buildable lot standards are a useful tool on a town wide basis. Currently, um, only forty five municipalities in Connecticut are using the buildable lot standard on a town wide. Uh, or excuse me, there's a hundred and fifty one towns in Connecticut that have buildable lot standards, but they're not all doing it on a, uh, a town wide basis where buildable lots, uh, may be excluded in certain zones, particularly commercial, industrial are the ones that are most commonly excluded from, uh, but really fundamentally, when you're dealing with, uh, buildability, um, if you're getting into the issues of erosion and sedimentation control and stormwater management, those things are really town wide issues. Um, and Ashford yet has not had to deal with the MS four program. Uh, but it's on the horizon and I, I believe at some point, uh, it will be useful, but really, uh, my comments were really directed at the interstate interchange development zone to show, um, what that tool could do for that zone, even if there are implications for the rest of the town.
Yeah, my, my question was hopefully a yes or a no, uh, because the report as you've listed it could apply to the entire town. Uh, when you talk about buildable lots, you talk about slope, you talk about all the items that are listed there that would change the entire definition of what is a buildable lot in the entire town. And so unless I misread what you wrote, that is what you, you are implying.
Uh, well, we already have buildable lot standards i- in the residential zone, but not in the commercial industrial zone.
No, but you are, you are proposing it for the entire town?
Uh, no, I was just proposing, my whole focus is on the interstate interchange development zone as it being a useful tool there. But as a matter of, uh, sidebar comment, absolutely, I believe it's useful for the entire town. But the focus here really is to bring a tool that's useful for this particular zone.
Okay. Trying to get back to the point of yes or no, you are saying yes, you would propose this for the entire town?
Uh, no, I'm proposing this for the interstate interchange development zone. That's.
I, I think, I think what Mr. Vidic has said is that it, we have buildable site assessment for our residential area, residential agricultural area, uh, to some, to some degree. Obviously, what we don't have is it applied to commercial areas and to the I I D zone. Um, and it would be, he's recommending definitely for the I I D zone based on where the I I D zone is located and some of the environmental issues that have come up. Um, and that it would be applicable to our commercial zone.
Okay. In reading what you cited to Yukon Clear, i- it's applicable to all, uh, all zones. That's my interpretation. Uh, whether you disagree with me, that's fine. Are you aware, are you aware that there is special conditions placed upon any commercial development? Uh, in, in particular, any large development, be it at the exit seventy two area or in the area, uh, referred to as the wagon shed area, where there is any large development that is proposed, that there are special conditions placed upon that?
Are you talking about the interchange, uh, interstate interchange development zone?
No, I'm talking about any large development that would be either at the exit seventy two or in also, also the, what we've referred to as the wagon shed area. Any development that is a large development requires special funds to be put aside to allow the town to evaluate such proposals. And it is a minimum of fifteen thousand dollars or, uh, I don't have my, my notes in front of me or a percentage of the proposed development that would be put aside for the town to spend to evaluate in technical detail anything that would be proposed to be developed. Are you aware of that part of the regulation?
Uh, the, the part that you can fund, uh, a consultant to look at a proposed development?
Yeah, that the person proposing that development funds that development, funds the monies for the town to, to, to do that.
Yes, I'm aware of that, uh, practice and I'm aware of that principle. I'm also aware of the state laws that allow for that practice.
No, this is not a state law. This is in the regulation.
Yeah, but I know the enabling law that goes to enable that to happen. Yes, I'm aware of that.
There's no enabling law. It's physically in the regulation.
Yes, yes, I'm aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the commission?
Uh, hi, this is Luther. Um, I, I think it's, um, a potentially, the, the Yukon Clear specifically is potentially a useful, um, tool. I think that as with most data analytic tools, the quality of what we get from it is going to be subject to the quality of the parameters that we set. I am not particularly comfortable with simply adopting the default baseline parameters. I think that there needs to be a, some consideration given by the commission if we choose to use this tool moving forward to determine what those parameters would best be selected to be for this particular town. I personally have, um, reservations with setting restrictive standards in regard to, uh, slope and things of that nature. I've been reluctant to embrace bedrock and slope limitations for use, uh, for the entirety of my participation in this commission going back over ten years. And I think that all that really affects is pushing development into the best qualities of land that the town still retains that could be better used for other purposes other than holding, uh, residential or industrial development. So I think, you know, it might be a tool that's useful. I think it should be used deliberately and I think that we need to be thoughtful in how we select the parameters for any such tool or any such evaluation.
Yeah, Jeff, this is Dick again. Uh, I wholly endorse what Luther's referring to because when we set about to modify the slope and the bedrock and all of that, we quickly came to the conclusion when we were writing the regulations that we were going to make the ideal development, uh, farmland. And, and we wanted to preserve farmland, uh, because farmland tends to be nice and flat. And, and, and it's, you know, it, it's very easy to develop.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And, and we didn't want to encourage that as default. So that's the reason that we relaxed the slope and the bedrock and all of those, those items in the current regulations.
Correct. And I remember that, Dick. I, I, I fully support and remember making those changes. I think the term was dynamite. So dynamite's a wonderful thing when it came to, uh, bedrock and, um, the, the, just the slope nature and what we were seeing was that, uh, development and reducing down, you know, even reducing down our minimum lot size and such was moving us into those areas that we hold so dear, which comes to the agricultural, uh, ability and the farmland itself. Luther, you have your hand up again.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, this will be very brief. I just wanted to also just say that, you know, I'm, I'm in no way blanket, uh, refuting examination of, of what's in the best interest of the town. I also do think that it's important to, um, fully embrace what is possible with appropriate engineering, appropriate measures, appropriate, all of the, the, the things that are available to us now. Um, and, and, and it, it, it's in, in, in all probability, there, there is a, an upper cap on, uh, what's appropriate for, um, total lot coverage and all of those things. You know, we don't have uh, some of those numbers. Uh, we have some numbers for that and it may be that those revised, but I think that, um, I thi- I, I don't like taking any particular tool and just running it as is. I think that it needs to be done, uh, with a, a lens that appropriately focuses on Ashford.
Thank you. And ju- and just going back to, um, what, uh, Dick had mentioned regarding the, um, the large use, uh, uh, large, uh, uh, I can't remember the full name of the term, but when we have a large, um, facility looking to come in and put something, uh, large in with a, uh, dollar figure that they used to research and make sure that everything is right with that. I think with, uh, Mr. Vidic's information here, it's, it's a package, as Luther said. I mean, it's not a one simple system, but it allows us to concentrate what uh, the consultant, the developer, the whoever we hire, the engineer to focus on. And I think that's what, uh, part of Mr. Vidic's, uh, report to us shows that items that are being looked at in other towns as well as what are a lot of primary, um, considerations to take when it comes to looking at this. Uh, Janet, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, I, well, I agree with Luther. Um, and that's why I asked about the parameters that, you know, I think we need to look at those and, and see what, and make sure they, or what we want, but I don't almost feel confident to make these decisions. Um, the, the other, the other thing I, I, I understand Luther said, and I agree that we, we didn't want to steer people towards just tearing up our farmland because it was flat. But, um, my, my question with, question is, um, with all these steep slopes, if we ignore that and they are taken away, you know, how, how does that affect what's happening with the water? So you know, that, that's what we're really looking at is the water quality, I hope. Um, so I don't know, I don't know how to balance that. So I, I, I don't know what the answer is to that. Um, just to put that out there. And then I just had a, a specific question. Um, because, um, while I was door knocking this follow along eighty nine, everybody's complaining about the traffic and the, and the, the trucks. And you had mentioned, um, Mr. Vidic about, um, traffic impact and noise standards and towns that have those. And I was wondering, do those apply to state roads if we put it in for our town?
If, if you have this, uh, a noise standard, does it apply to state roads?
Yes.
It would apply to whatever you, uh, designate it to apply to. The question, of course, is always that of enforcement. Um, in public, uh, the Public Act passed in two thousand twenty one, authorized municipalities to independently create their own noise ordinance without the approval of the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection. That's a huge, um, giveaway that they have made at this point in allowing towns to do it on their own. Uh, having the authority to enforce, uh, to create the regulation is easy to enforce it becomes the more difficult thing. Um, and we have less control, uh, over state roads than we do over town roads. Uh, to the extent that, uh, we can work with the state to have them do certain things, uh, then we can have some influence, but our influence is far less on a state road than it is on a, a local road. Um, and then of course, uh, the question of what is the source of the noise, if the noise is from a development Uh, and then, of course, uh, the question of what is the source of the noise, if the noise is from a development residential, commercial, industrial, and of course, then uh the town would have a direct authority over those kinds of noises. However, the issue of noises from roads, particularly state roads, uh, that's a very challenging one. Uh, just because of the uh uh level of lack of control that municipalities have over state roads. Um, unless it's a collaborative process with the state of Connecticut as well as state legislators to alter certain uh standards on any given specific state road within Ashford. So there are limitations to what uh as no- noise ordinance will be able to accomplish. But within certain parameters, it can be very useful, particularly for industrial development. It goes twenty four seven and makes noises that may be uh controllable by uh the land use controls.
Since I've got my hand raised. I'm I'm maybe a few years out of date. But I looked into the uh whole issue of noise regulation for uh a town versus state. And basically, the state trumped the town. And this was when we were looking at the wind turbines uh being proposed for exit seventy two. And there was nothing that the town could do that could regulate the noise from those wind turbines. It was up to the state. And the town could not do anything that would supersede what the the state regulations were. Now, how that applies to a road, uh, I don't think it'd be any different. Uh, because the road is within the town, but but we don't have the ability within the town to regulate nose noise on our own. It is noises is a state regulated item.
I was under the, excuse me, Mr. Vidic, I just want to let Dick know. I was under that same assumption, Dick. And in going to a couple of meetings that Mr. Vidic has uh attended, and I think he just mentioned it here, as of two thousand twenty one. Such as the requirements where you couldn't make more stringent uh regulations than what the state had for decibels and things like that. That's basically all been taken off the books, as I understand it, and has allowed the towns the ability to make noise ordinances and such, and you don't have to have a DEP trained person with the the proper decibel equipment and things like that to uh register it. But as you said, the ability to um manage that, the ability to uh enforce that is the difficult part. And one of the things that I mentioned was that I had done a study of towns ten percent larger than us and ten percent smaller than us. And what they had in their ability, did they have a noise ordinance? And if they did, did they have an enforcement group? And yes, most of them had more so than a constable, maybe, you know, more like a uh uh either a uh state police resident trooper, or they had their own police force in there that was able to enforce the um uh rules and regulations that they had. So, but it has changed since the days of the turbine and most recently, some of the other issues we had with noise and such. Uh, where the town has much more control over setting limits that uh is not trumped by the state anymore. Did I capture that? Did I capture that right, Mr. Vidic?
Uh, yeah, the only thing I would say, uh, I'm on the Connecticut Council of Environmental Quality. One of the things that I do on that on behalf of the state is reviewing what the Connecticut Siting Council does. They are actually a super zoning organization. Uh, so to Mr. Williams' point, uh, those things which are exempted, uh, which are um windmills and uh solar collectors, uh telecommunications, those are three main things that are under their control. Um, and they're the sole arbiters as to whether any regulation that is uh associated with those types of developments is going to have noise. They are the final arbiters. So those are the unique exception exceptions that exist where super zoning exists at the state level. But with that caveat, uh, yes, the uh noise ordinance uh uh law that was passed in twenty twenty one basically uh decouples noise ordinances from requiring approval and uh cross uh certification by deep. Uh, it used to be that way, but it it is no longer. So there is a domain in which uh the commission can actually do something, particularly with commercial industrial zones. Uh, if they were extremely noisy. Uh, so it's 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 a tool. It it may have value, it may not. It's it's just something to think about. Especially if if there is a concern with noise.
You know, on that same vein, uh, this goes back a little bit further. Uh, at one point in time, we had a trash recycling facility proposed for exit seventy two. And we were able to head that off for other reasons, but that would have produced uh mu- much more traffic than anyone's talked about for any of these other developments and much more noise. Uh, but you know, but that was uh potentially regulated by the state because there is desire to promote uh trash recycling. So there's there's a lot of places where the state comes in, trumps what the town can do. Uh, I should just throw that out. Uh, wind turbines being one. There are other items, uh, you know, uh, re- recycling, uh, uh facilities that do uh trash to energy. Th- those are all items that are potentially uh beyond the town's control.
Any other questions or statements for Mr. or uh clarifications for Mr. Vidic?
Uh, well, the only thing I would say that I think is very valuable um is for the commission to look at the emerging practice of uh low impact development and that's associated with uh the MS four program, but more specifically with the latest uh stormwater quality manual, which uh is effective March thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Um, anybody who does stormwater management work in Connecticut uh in any of the hundred sixty nine towns now uh must use the latest manual that is coming out in just two months, I guess. Um, and I think the important thing to understand is that uh manual is a significant deviation from the two thousand four stormwater quality manual in that it puts low impact development as the first step in any stormwater management planning process. And uh um in town, we our our stormwater management regulations really um well, let's put it this way, there's an opportunity uh to really kind of um strengthen them. It's particularly because that type of uh uh regulation is most valuable for commercial industrial development where the most concerns are with stormwater, particularly since our town is an entire entirely virtually a hundred percent um stormwater, uh, public water supplies, uh watershed. So I would, even though that goes beyond the interstate interchange development zone as a concept, uh, it's particularly valuable for commercial industrial development, and I'd urge the commission to uh become familiar with that manual because uh that is the go to guide for all stormwater in Connecticut. Um, and how that's applied, of course, is how your regulation might deal with it. And uh in what aspects of the regulation you'd use and what standards you'd use specifically um in terms of whether it's uh achieving uh pre-development hydrology in the post-development phase of a project or whether it's going to be something less than that or uh engineering controls. There's a whole range of stormwater controls. This is the emerging area uh which is uh taking uh Connecticut municipalities. Uh, you know, by uh the short here, as you could say, and really getting them to uh pay attention because it's really tied into the MS four program, which right now Ashford is not part of, but eventually they have to deal with it. So that's the only thing I'd say in closing.
Thank you, Mr. Vidic. We appreciate your input. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about these two documents you provided to us. Um, I will let the commission know that uh Mike and I have been mostly through Mike uh have been in contact with um the own the major owner of the uh uh in the IID zone. And he has asked also to speak to the commission regarding uh some of the uh uh review and some of the development and some of the planning that took place uh and what he's received from people, uh, experts and consultants that he has uh regarding development in the IID zone or again, his port, his very large portion of the ID zone. So hopefully he'll be able to join us uh with next month's meeting uh to discuss some of the information that he has uh to share for developing that area. And again, uh, not so much what his plans were, but um what was shared with him from the consultants and engineers that he was working with. So, thank you very much uh for that, Mr. Vidic. We will uh move on. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, uh something you've all been waiting for with bated breath is the results of the survey from the IID zone. Uh, Mike, uh, still with us?
I am.
All right, very good. Thank you, sir.
So, I'm gonna share.
Hello, my little buddy.
Can you see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, so back in November, um, we launched the survey. Just wanna just put a couple of the pieces in here. We we advertised it on the town website through Facebook and it was in the Ashford Citizen. Um, the survey was open from the thirteenth of November approximately to the thirty first. Uh, and we received a total of three hundred and eighteen responses. So the first question, and I tried to download these and put them in a format that's easiest to understand. Um, first question was just indicate your relationship to Ashford. Um, so eighty three percent residents only. Point three one was um is basically one response. So it was a business owner. Uh, eleven percent resident and business owner and uh just under three percent were uh resident of nearby town. This question, number two, asked them to rank the uses currently permitted by the regulations. From basically to look at the appropriateness. Um, I have shown them what they indicated. So on the left-hand side, you'll see the uh uses, and these are the uses that are currently in the regulations. So again, this wasn't um a list of predefined uses to try to skew results or anything along those lines, to be clear. These are uses which are already in the IID, and we asked them to provide feedback on those existing uses. Um, so red is what was deemed not appropriate, yellow was what uh was deemed to be neutral and green uh was appropriate. So you'll see here, there's there's quite a range. Manufacturing was um shown by fifty one percent not to be appropriate. Um, and twenty and twenty nine percent respectively. The next one, agriculture, eleven percent not appropriate, twenty one percent uh neutral and sixty nine percent appropriate. Um, and it and it kind of goes on through. Um, I won't read every single one um individually, but you can see there that, you know, obviously there are certain uses which um are are not currently supported. And I guess I'll mention, I I'll post this online when we're done with it, um, so that it's available. I'm just trying to show it in the most concise way. Uh, the next question was basically asking them to to indicate their preference related to a single building layout or a multiple building layout showing the same square footage. So sixty three percent uh preferred the multiple building layout uh and thirty seven percent uh preferred the single building layout. And again, that was both these images depict the same total square footage. This one uh is a little bit harder to see, um, but it talked about uh the previous application and how it could have resulted in a building in excess of a million square feet. Uh, and that the IID zone currently limits maximum size of any one building to two hundred fifty thousand square feet. And then in ask them indicate their preference on pertaining to building size, whether we should maintain the two hundred fifty thousand square foot um size, increase to five hundred thousand, seven hundred fifty thousand, a million, reduce the building size or not limited at all. Um, so we had quite a range there. Um, you'll see uh thirty four percent felt it should be limited. Between the three options, we had about ten percent felt it should be increased in some way. Six percent felt it shouldn't be limited at all. Um, and uh forty five percent to limit something less than two hundred fifty thousand square feet. The last one um asked uh survey takers to um basically put a list of potential project impacts in order from most important to least important. Um, so this kind of shows you um the the numbers and how it was um averaged over the total uh s- all the responses. So um you'll see here, preservation of existing landscapes was ranked to be the most important uh m- most of the time, I guess, is the easiest way to show that or explain that. Um, traffic was the next sort of important piece. Um, in impervious surfaces and water coverage and consumption fell in line after that. Um, grandlist growth and job creation um came equal with um services to residents. Um, so I can get you the full breakdowns to show how, you know, how they were individually ranked, but this kind of is a a a summary of that. And
Mike, uh, I'm so sorry to jump in. I'm I'm just a little confused because of your text captioning where you're showing one as being the most important and least being six being the least important. I just want to clarify that if you're gonna post this, then the public may misinterpret.
You froze, Luther.
Existing landscape that's written out is the opposite of the scale that Mike just shared with us verbally.
Yeah, I so I can post, like I said, when I post it, I can put the actual responses for each subcategory. This is just ranking them in summary, but the when I post the numbers, it'll show how each individual option, you know, how many times grandlets growth was ranked number one, how many times it was ranked number two, how many times it was ranked three. So it'll show all of it.
Okay.
Um, and so there were um the what the last question just provided a comment box for people to write anything that they thought was um whatever, a question or a comment, anything they wanted to tell the commission. So um between the online surveys and the paper surveys, um, we had a little just over a hundred and forty written comments. Um, some of them were um quite lengthy, so I'm just working on downloading those and those I'm just gonna I'll put into a single document and post it as a PDF. Um, it's anonymous, so we won't know who who submitted them or anything like that, but I'll just post those comments. It I just have to go through and pull them d- down individually. Um, but uh I'll I'll post those separately when I get that completed.
Mike, when you post those, is there any, not to add to your difficulty, but is there any way to group them as to how the response went, if they were uh either similar in nature or the same wording or anything like that?
Uh, I think they're right now sequential and some of them are four words and others are several paragraphs. So I think they're just gonna go based upon the way they were received.
Very, very similar to the comments we received um for the uh IID, the uh text amendment.
Yeah, I'll put it all into one document, so it'll just show the comment one by one.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh, comments from the commission regarding the uh results on the survey uh as indicated there?
Yeah, just in general, uh this is not scientific at all, but I polled half a dozen people that uh kinda span uh some a little bit knowledgeable of using uh technology and others that weren't uh by and large, most that were not all that uh adept at using technology, meaning scanning that uh, you know, barcode to a access the survey. Most of them simply said, it this is too hard, I can't do it. So to hell with it. So I I think we have a lot of people and and I think maybe Janet's approach of trying to get on paper uh copies out to the senior center in other places captured some of the people. But I think there's an awful lot of people in town that uh simply don't take to this type of survey. Uh so I so I think taking this as an absolute is is something to 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 be thought about by the by the commission because you know, I had no problem accessing it, but it really wasn't all that that easy even for me. You know? And and uh as I said, half a dozen other people said they looked at it, they they tried to do it and and they they saw the thing in the citizen, they couldn't scan it, they they wouldn't type in the actual link. And and they said, it's it's too much bother. I'm not gonna bother to do it.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Jeff?
Yeah, I couldn't disagree with Dick anymore. I don't think it could have been any easier to uh complete that survey. That's all I have to say about it.
Yeah, the only thing I will say, Jeff, is you're probably a lot more uh adept than than some of the average citizens in town.
Well, I mean, Dick, I mean, we had five hundred and oh God, we had more than that. We have over five hundred people on Zoom meetings, so they know how to work Zoom. Um if they have a Q reader, I mean, the Q code reader, then you know, they've they've accessed it some way, whether it's coupons or something like that. Um so I I think putting a piece of paper out there in the fact that this was even greater than our affordable housing survey. And that was with people standing at the um uh transfer station and at the uh food pantry. Uh trying to gain responses and such like that. I think the uh three hundred and eighteen is not so much a bad number and we can probably feel that it is a a cross section of people, but that's my opinion.
Could I, could I speak? Could I speak?
Valerie, go ahead.
Well, I I thought that the uh survey was also available at the town hall for those that wanted to do it on paper.
That was expressed in the um uh citizen also, yes.
So people had a chance that didn't want to use a computer.
You're right. Thank you. Um. Did we, did anyone find any of the responses surprising? I know you haven't had a chance to really mull it over or anything, and Mike will be getting it out to you so you can really do it. So we can, you know, I just didn't know if anything jumped out from anyone.
My my two cents worth is uh the responses were not surprising. I I think that they uh mirrored the response that we had uh to our multiple Zoom meetings in terms of, you know, no mega warehouses, keep Ashford rural. I think that group uh was very participative. It's easy for me to say. They participated a lot in this. Uh and and that's why I said what I said earlier in that uh my unstatistical sample of half a dozen people said they weren't that interested or bothered to try to do it and they did, they found it that that easy to do. And they're not, they weren't about to go to town hall to get a a paper ballot. They 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 pretty much dismissed the whole thing.
That was a choice also. Mark, your hand up.
Um I actually had the opposite reaction. I actually anticipated seeing a huge negative response to to increasing um you know, the buildable size. So I actually anticipated being much higher than forty-five percent because you know, if you looked at cumulatively between leaving it at two hundred and fifty thousand square feet or unlimiting it, um it was actually greater.
Right, yeah.
I mean, so 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 in so in totality, more than fifty percent of the respondents in essence said to either leave it at two fifty or to increase it. So that I I actually expected that forty-five to be more like sixty.
Of course, of course, we don't know what the narrative says in there too, because out of a hundred and forty, almost fifty percent have a narrative in there. There might be statements saying, you know, down to twenty-five or fifty thousand square feet because it wasn't, you know, giving a specific number as opposed to just less than two fifty.
Well, right, but the but the other options were leaving it at two fifty on lim- making it unlimited, you know. Wait, wait to see what the applicant, you know, proposed, so.
The size of the building uh that wasn't my biggest, my biggest issue was the uh what was most important for the town. Uh and I found it interesting that the bulk of the people uh found uh reducing taxes in town. Or maybe the way it was worded that was not is well understood, but uh yeah, I I find it hard to believe that uh a a large percentage of the people in town would not think reducing taxes was an important thing. It's important to me. I just paid my taxes.
No, I I I agree, Dick. That was, that was a surprise to me as well because that's that'll probably be the number one factor for me ever leaving Connecticut is the tax burden.
Yeah, I mean, uh the the taxes I pay in town uh I I pay probably five times more taxes than my kids in North Carolina, uh Denver and uh you know, suburbs of Columbus and and they all own homes worth at least double what my home is worth.
Can I just, can I just say um to that, that a lot of the people at the um that testified or a number of them mentioned that, you know, quality of life was more important to them than than um what the tack, the taxes. So I'm not totally surprised at that. Answer.
Okay. Anything else for anyone? All right. Uh, thank you. And uh you're gonna have those uh posted for us at some point, Mike, right? For us to peruse.
Yeah, I just need to finish up pulling down the independent responses.
Right. Okay, very good. Okay.
It'd be good to see the actual text of the individual responses and if there's any way to tie those those two, some of the answers that they that they made to to the questions, it'd be good.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do anything to the responses. I'm just gonna download them all, put them into a single document and post them. I'm not gonna try to paraphrase or summarize or tally. I'm gonna just post them exactly as they were written by the respondents.
All right, the uh last item under new business is informal discussion on twenty-two knot highway uh for uh Jeff Love. I'm not exactly sure. I didn't see a plan. Again, this is informal, I guess. Mr. Love, are you on, or Mike, do you want to open up?
Yeah, yeah, if if I could just quickly, um so the uh Connecticut general statutes allow for um the commission to have an informal discussion with an applicant regarding a project or potential project. And the purpose of the discussion is to basically get feedback. Um it's a non-binding discussion on both the applicant and the commission's part. But the idea is if an applicant has a question, is considering a project or a property or a path forward, um rather than submitting an application um and and choosing the wrong approach or something being dead on arrival or getting too far out and and spending money and on something um unnecessarily, they can come before you to just have an informal discussion, talk to you about their idea uh and plan just to get that feedback and and if then they feel comfortable, they could move forward with the traditional process. So I don't know that we've necessarily done this here in recent recollection, at least in my mind. Um but this is a very common thing. A lot of towns push and almost require that applicants come before commissions informally before they submit. Um so when I I heard from Mr. Love and he had some questions about uh the property at twenty-two knot highway and uh it was a little bit unclear in the regulations, I suggested he uh come and talk to the commission informally before moving forward so that I wasn't giving him feedback and trying to read anybody's minds.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that.
Jeff, could you uh help us with idea of where twenty-two knot high highway is located? Is this uh near some of the commercial buildings that are there?
Two knot highway is the the piece across from the extra market Dunkin' Donuts on the corner. It's about eighteen nineteen acre piece uh runs about eight nine hundred feet on forty-four and about twelve hundred feet on four uh seventy-four.
Okay, that's that's been for sale for quite a while.
Yes. So my question was, it's zoned as commercial, but in my looking at the zoning regulations and the discussions with Mike D'Amato, we couldn't find up any particular zoning for what we would like to do there, which is uh self-storage units and potentially a uh gravel site uh off-season storage for boats and RVs, campers uh entailing two to three acres of the eighteen. So we're just looking for some guidance since there's, since there's no particular zoning aimed at those particular things.
There is regulations concerning uh gravel sites in the existing regulations and it would apply to that site just as well as any other site in town.
So I think he means a parking area covered with gravel, not a gravel operation.
Correct.
And that gravel area would be for the storage of uh uh what you said, RV and boats and such?
Correct. But in addition to that also would be the small self-contained units, um you know, the row, the rows of self-contained storage units. That would be in a pave slash concrete area. All to be determined, but again, we're looking at no particular zoning regs specific for self-storage units or RV slash boat off ca- uh off-season storage areas. So we're just looking to see that we could do that before we purchase the land and find out we can't do anything with it. And I don't expect an answer right now. It's just a particular question that will have to be discussed amongst the the board members and guidance therefrom.
Mi- Mr. Mr. May I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Jan.
Somebody, I don't know if this is accurate or not. Somebody told me that that area is a ledge. Um is is that correct?
It's a ledge covered by one to two feet of dirt. I had dealings with that particular property about fifteen years ago, digging test holes to look for septic areas and things like that. And it was a a piece of property that years ago, I think in the seventies or eighties, was stripped off of uh existing material and left with one to two feet of cover on top of ledge. The ledge is not like solid to there. It's up and down. There's uh particular spots where it's not not so good, not so bad. There's no real uh buildability, so let's say for high water usage because there's very limited septic area. We did find septic areas up and back that have to be pumped to. And again, this is fifteen-year-old information. The land hasn't changed. Other trees have grown bigger. Uh and again, that's why we're looking at self-storage and RV boat storage, which requires no water usage. And uh just trying to, trying to find a home for that thing.
Well, I was wondering suitable for these uh these uses that really require a lot of flat land. Accessible from the road.
The land is accessible from the road and it's also, it's not flat, but it's not very steep. It is uh it is uh suitable for this type of thing without any blasting. We don't need to dig cellar holes or anything like that. It's just surface work that is more than suitable for this. You have to have some kind of gradient pitch on the property anyways for water drainage, otherwise you have self-storage units drowning in water with level surfaces. So again, this is all further down the road, but we're just looking for right now is some guidance as to what the zoning would allow there since there is no particular regulations for it.
The the last uh proposal for that site that was actually uh uh given preliminary goal ahead was for a shopping center, which included ironically, since everyone wants to have a supermarket and included a Highland Park supermarket plus several other stores. And to my knowledge, looking at that back half a dozen years ago, uh that was able to meet all the requirements for septic and uh access and grade and the like. So uh I I'm not sure of what you're proposing would be any more taxing than a shopping center would have been.
No, it wouldn't be.
Unfortunately, would be great if you could manage to put a Highland Park supermarket there.
Something like that would be nice.
I'm saying Luther, you had your hand up, but I'm muted. Go ahead.
Thanks, and and I'm sorry if I cut out. Just let me know and I'll I'll be quiet. Um not not to put um this isn't an effort to cut conversation short. I I'm just trying to seek clarification. It's my understanding that if um right, so it's not a listed permitted use and it's not a listed specially permitted use. And that our regulations are written in such a fashion that if a use is not listed as permitted or specially permitted, then it's not allowed. So would this just be a case of needing to submit a text amendment application to make it a specially permitted use or permitted use to allow development to move forward?
Right, yeah. So I think if I could jump in, the the goal here would be if the commission feels that based upon the site and the proposed use that it's, it's something that seems appropriate and granted the layout of the site, the size, all those things are to be determined, but if the use of the property based upon what's been presented is something that's worth further conversation, then it's not an absolute no. Then I think the the takeaway for Mr. Love, if I, you know, the the takeaway for him with this meeting would be, does he feel comfortable enough moving forward? And yeah, so the the process would be, we would have to do, he would have to basically request that the commission formally amend the regulations. There's there's nothing in the regs that currently allows for it. There's there's nothing in the regs that currently allows for it. But rather than just submitting that application, the idea here would be to get feedback to see if that is something the commission would even entertain.
Thanks, Mike. I I thought that's that was the point of the conversation, but I don't know that it had been said that overtly. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page that it's sort of a, is this worth doing a text amendment for?
Again, going back in history. Six or eight years ago, there was a proposal for a self, you know, self-storage facility. I don't recall exactly where it was, but it was along seventy four. And I I believe it was approved or, you know, at least considered at that point in time. This was before the most recent land use regulations were written. But it was something that was considered at that point.
Jeff, what about the existing building that's there? What would happen with that?
To the to the left side of the property?
Yes.
That building is not on the property. That's a separate parcel. That's where the, I think the sign-making place is there, and there's a couple of other things up in there.
The dentist is up there and everything, yeah.
Yeah, that's a completely separate parcel. That's, we would have a different entrance coming in. All of that kind of thing is separate parcel. I believe that piece was cut off this piece originally years ago, so it's a separate parcel.
Okay.
Do you, Jeff, do you picture? I mean, I know you don't have a plan or anything like this, but of course you've got something rolling around. Do you, where do you picture accessing it off of seventy four or off of forty four?
I believe line of sight and traffic speed, everything was dictated from state of Connecticut off of off of seventy four. Probably pretty close across to the entrance from Dunkin' Donuts on that side. Just by eyeball, in general knowledge, what takes dealing with the state for entrances off of state roads and all. Coming over that hill, coming up the hill and coming over the top of the hill. I don't think you'd have enough line of sight to get a safely, a safe entrance off of forty four there. I think the state would shoot that. I mean, we can certainly try for that, but it's 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 again conjecture.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking about what comes around down forty four and around that curve. Right into that, right into seventy four there.
Yeah, the state's gonna have to give us, I mean, it would be, it wouldn't be any closer than the entrance to Dunkin' Donuts, which sets a precedence for for distance. If anything, it's gonna be further away towards the post office, which will give more traffic clearance and on the same side of the road, so you're not gonna have crossing traffic there from what you're what you're thinking.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, Jeff, the if we go back to the state's intervention on the Cumberland Farms expansion. We as a town really don't have much say on where, you know, egress and ex, you know, exit takes place off a state highway. The state pretty much determines that.
Right up until someone dies. Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and yeah, and we've got a little memorial right in front of Cumberland Farms to that effect.
I know. Yes, Mark.
That's why we're gonna prevent that.
You need at least five to die first.
So so you mentioned that you're gonna, you're looking at developing approximately three acres of the eighteen. So is is the three off of seventy four toward the post office or is the three off of forty four across from Pompeii?
To be determined. I want to say it's gonna be towards the back of the property either way. Trying to cause a, you know, I don't want to cut all the trees off and make it a big, huge open area. We want to keep it as natural as possible. So we're gonna try to push it up. I I don't know, to the left, to the right, probably to the left. I just, again, to be determined.
Thank you.
Do you have plans for developing the rest of the area?
Depending on needs, if anything, probably more self-storage as time goes on, if there's a if there's a higher need for it. But that's the main, the main goal right now is to do that. And again, to be determined soils, buildability. I know towards the back, it gets a little steep. I don't want to be cutting into that and blasting and doing all that stuff. The the main portion of the land is is level with a with a pitch, but it's not all hilly up there because they, when they stripped it off, they they cleaned it up nice. It's just all gotta be redone.
Just as an aside, and I know you must have looked into this, there is a a shortage of self-storage in this area. You've got one in Coventry. I think one in Willamette. There's there's nothing really in in Mansfield at all.
There's one in Stafford.
There's some, there's some around, but nothing close by from what we're what we're looking at. And I and I don't know the the capacity of these other ones, if they're filled up already or if they're still. Like I said, I'm not gonna go in there and build a thousand units. We're gonna go in for hundred, two hundred units to see how it works, starts out. And then if there's a need to expand, we'll have room to expand because there's enough property to do with.
Janet?
Yes. Might not mute it. Okay, sorry. Well, I have two comments. One is, we know that we can't trust the DOT to keep our roads safe. So I do have concern over a facility that's gonna be bringing in a lot of large pardon me, large RVs on that part of the road. That's that it's it is congested and confusing already. Number two, RV storage and storage units aren't you know, really aren't visually attractive. And I'm just wondering if that's what we want on that important corner. And I I like the fact that you say that you'll keep the trees and so forth there.
Well, obviously, if if we're allowed to go forward, it's gonna be contingent upon, you know, whether we plant a row of arborvitae's or we keep the natural vegetation there. You know, and like I said, we want to push it up away from the corner. So that if there isn't a future need for something else further down retail space, you want that closer to the front. Again, we're not, I live in town. I'm not trying to put something ugly up there. We want to keep it as low-key as possible. It's not a, it's not a drive-by destination by any means. It's gonna be a drive-to destination, so not it's not something we need out right out in front showing off that here we are, come and stop. It's gonna be somebody's looking for us particularly, so it doesn't have to be up front.
Luther?
Just a quick follow-up. I I know Dick just said something about this, but I was actually wanted to ask, have you done any research on if this is actually a service that is being sought out by the community? You know, it's a residentially based community in terms of people having homes and not so much apartment utilization. And, you know, there is self-storage in Chaplain and Mansfield and Stafford. I'm just curious, is it a, is it a thing that people are looking for?
Informal investigation has said, yes, it is. There, for instance, where Rosales used to be in stores, they're putting in five hundred ninety apartment units there right now. There's plans for another twelve to fifteen hundred units of living over on North Eagle Road, UCA. It's not right next door. It's five miles away. People travel if they need to for storage. Again, it's anything can change tomorrow and change the whole aspect of things. But right now, that's what we're we're anticipating and that's what we're looking at.
Okay, anything else from the commission?
The only thing I would say is that we're, it is a not permitted area. The commission would have say to some extent on how it's cited and how it's looked upon from the street. So there's a, there's a lot of flexibility that the commission would have upon approving this use.
My my opinion of all that is, you know, if we get to go ahead with this and we can go forward, obviously, we're gonna work hand in hand with the commission before we even get started with this. We're gonna come in with preliminary drawings to show the outline of the land, a preliminary layout of what we're gonna do. And then you guys can see what we're planning and then it becomes official after that for whatever, you know, when we get to official plans and all. But this is something that'll have, we've worked hand in hand with the commission to allow it to happen. And and again, I live in town. My partner to deal lives right next door in Wellington. You know, we're the local guys. We're here to try to do something and make it happen in the right way.
Well, I think based on what I've heard from the commission so far, that it's not, obviously, it's not a far-fetched idea. It's in the commercial zone, which bodes well, obviously, because that's where we want our commercial enterprises to go into. It's economic development. Obviously, it's business here in town, and you know, that's a good thing, too. So again, depending on when we get to the point of official site plans and, you know, the aesthetics in that area and obviously the, as Janet brought up, the the safety of the egress and the the entrance and the exit there will obviously become, you know, a concern for us. But I hear nothing from a a negative standpoint for, you know, moving forward. Obviously, this is informal and it'll all depend on the official stuff. But for right now, again, I haven't heard anything that would stop us. But what really needs to take place first and foremost, as Michael and Luther brought up, was the the text amendment to allow the function to take place.
And Jeff, I I would add that one of the things I would put forth is that on the land that is not developed remaining of this property is that there be a consideration for other u- uses besides self-storage.
Absolutely.
You know, so you you wouldn't develop it in a way that would make that development too difficult.
I try not to shoot myself in the foot, but it happens sometimes. So.
I think I think Jeff mentioned, you know, looking at the land from the, you know, the possibility of further retail closer to the road and things like this. So yeah, I think that consideration is there.
Yes.
Okay, I think we, I think we've given you all the assurance we can at this point.
So next step from here, we we write up something to to change the or to amend the the rules or you guys write them up or how's that work?
You you need to give us a application for a text amendment and the wording that you're looking for in that change.
Okay. I'm sure I'll be in touch with you guys to get it clarified at another time.
Yeah, Mike, Mike obviously is a great help on that.
Yes, he is. Been very, very helpful. So I appreciate the commission's time and we'll get things moving.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, zoning officer report.
I don't know that I have anything worth reporting beyond what we've talked about at nine thirty PM.
You tell me you've got nothing that's gonna make my night. That's fine.
Well, I'll leave it at that. Yep.
Okay, very good. Uh, looking to thank you all for your attention before we leave on this. Again, a long night, a lot of stuff to go through. I do appreciate your effort, your time and your dedication. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Jerry, second motion. Seconded by Jeff Schellinger and all a favor. Again, thank you all and stay warm, stay safe, don't go off the road in the snow and we'll talk again.
Happy New Year.